I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Board of Education. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge. Let's by Mr. Sanders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation after our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that we have our annual organizational meeting. There was an election in November. Some of you might be confused because there were not any names on the ballot because both Troy and I ran unopposed. So, to save the cost of printing, no names on the ballot. So, we were re-elected. Thank you. And I think we have to get sworn in?
Yes, so I get to administer the oath of office. Probably you can stand right there.
Oh, excellent.
Put your right hand up.
You could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Sherry.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the- I'm gonna break out.
I actually have- No problem. Okay, do you solemnly swear that I'll support and defend the Constitution of the State of California?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will- And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties-
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
That was a tough sentence, but-
That was tough. I've done this a few times. Okay. Now, we'll hold our organizational meeting. I think E. I would like to hear nomination and election of board officers. Recommended motion that the board consider and nominate and elect the president of the board and the clerk of the board for the- for 2013.
I would nominate Mr. Troy Sanderson for president.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I hear any nominations for clerk?
I would nominate Mike Battley for clerk.
I would say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Everyone is done? Sorry, did I put pen? I did. Okay, and then I- item two, appointment of superintendent to secretary. Recommended motion that the board appoint our superintendent to secretary of the board.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, selection of the representative and alternative representative to fill vacancies on the Sonoma County Committee on School District Organization for 2012-13. Recommended motion that the board select a representative and alternate representative to serve on the Committee on School District Organization for 2013. And there's some explanation as to what this means. Basically, it's somebody who votes for the candidates who are on that committee.
I'd nominate Sherry.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we need an alternate, so-
I'd nominate Carolyn.
I'll second her.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're giving you a break, Mary.
Thank you. I'm actually on that committee. Okay, item four. Board meeting dates. Recommended motion that the board approve the regular meetings of the Board of Education to be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 6:00 p.m., with the exception of March, July, August, November, and December due to calendar and holidays. Steve, you want to discuss what our options are?
Yes, so in July, we've gone to sometimes the third Wednesday as opposed to Tuesday, as opposed to the fourth Tuesday. So, we're proposing the sixteenth, but the twenty-third would work in July. In August, we've gone, we do the second and not the fourth because the fourth is right after school starts and it's a difficult time to have a meeting. The November, we only have one meeting because the second one is the week of Thanksgiving. In December, we have one meeting. It would be Christmas Eve for the second meeting, so we don't have that. In March, we have one meeting because we have spring break the week before, so there's no time to prepare for the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, so that'll be the eleventh. And so, the one in question is really July. Do you like the third Tuesday of the sixteenth or the fourth Tuesday, which is the twenty-third? And either works-
Either works.
Sixteen works for me, either one works.
I prefer the sixteenth.
Okay, do the sixteen, then.
Okay, that, and that's- So, you're going as proposed in first and second, the recommended meeting dates.
And is that- do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now, we get to do shuffle.
You know, I shouldn't dump this chair on the floor.
I'm right. It's not doing, I swear.
I'm not seeing a chair.
Oh, sorry. No, you have to take your coat.
I'm taking my coat.
That's your pod, that's your chair.
I'm not taking my chair.
I should come over here.
Wait until you sit on that one. You're so low, you're chilling.
Give Sherry a chair.
You too.
Give Sherry a chair.
Sorry.
Chivalry. I said I'd give you the good chair.
Oh, we got to slide our things down?
I hope the camera doesn't close up on this chair. It's a budget problem.
I didn't take my coat. It's like a latrine before taking a chair.
I fixed it for you. Sorry, I didn't notice.
I'll be just a minute to-
No, Steve, I'm New Jersey, I'm sorry.
You're on the clock, huh?
What's that?
Yeah, as soon as we very elegantly get them.
Move on.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, for Mary, appreciation, a service for Petaluma City Schools Board of Education President from 2011 through 2013. We do have a plaque for you.
That's very nice. Oh, he said I had to hold it up.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item F, adoption and approval of the agenda. I don't think we had any changes. I'll take a motion.
Salute. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's move over to the students. So, tonight, we have, along with Petaluma High School and Casa Grande High School, we have Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain here to give us a report on what's happening at their schools. So, why don't we start with Carpe Diem?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think you might remember who I am. Rusty Sims from Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain. This is a fun night for my staff and kind of pretty much fun for the kids involved. We actually kind of consider this a rite of passage for seniors who have kind of moved through our two sites, Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain, in all the ways we would hope that every kid does. These kids have done a number of things right over the last several years, and they're going to take a little bit of time to tell you the story of how they got here. But they are two of our shining stars, so it's my pleasure to introduce Patricia Perez and Joseph Martinez. Joseph is from Sonoma Mountain. Patricia Perez from Carpe Diem. So, want to slide up? Patty, you'll start?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Perez. I started attending Carpe Diem in the fall of 2011, but that was in my first high school. I started attending Casa Grande as a freshman in 2010. I lasted three days. After that, I attended Petaluma Community School. That school made me feel like I had no future. The teachers didn't care about another end to students getting away. I was told by many people around me that I would never be able to get an A in my report card from school.
Take your time.
I was treated the same as the people around me, and because of this, I never thought about my outcome of my decisions. And doing it pleased and never helped me credit-wise or allowed me to confront my issues. The only thing that I learned was to hate and fight and think well. I made- which made me feel like I was incapable of doing anything. Worse yet, I would never get back to the Petaluma District. Months went by, and all that was occurring was me falling into a purple. My moves were- were decided without a thought. I hated teachers, and all I thought was the teachers making my life miserable. Today, I look back and get a smile on my face. I look- I had to go through a long stage in juvenile hall in another school to realize I could take a chance for a better future. To me, that only meant attending the school in Petaluma District and being able to stay home with my child. When I was given the opportunity of attending Carpe Diem High, I felt like that was an opportunity to leave everything behind and prove those people wrong, who said and once told me that I was never going to do great. It was hard for me at first, but it was different, and I felt comfortable knowing I was going to actually graduate. I had difficulty self-first, being around other peers and having teachers who actually cared about my future. To me, that meant a lot, because Carpe Diem not only was a smaller school, but all the students who were there were there for different reasons. Everybody works together and helps each other out. The teachers understand the point of view of the students in respect, and we give them respect, not only as teachers, but also as friends. At Carpe Diem, I learned to see things differently. It has helped me deal with my problems from the past and having the support I never had. Most of all, the fact that I was a year behind my credits. As a school, we are able to have a lot of fun. The kind of fun where the students' issues wouldn't be an excuse. To be enrolled, you must have the emphasis of the DA's, which is attendance, attitude, and academics. Students who once couldn't go to school have seen a total change. They can achieve this because of all the support the teachers at Carpe gave. The class offered at Carpe are a little different than the bigger schools. Ms. Dennis is an English teacher and PE teacher. For English, we read prior responses and have related movies that relate to the subject in class. For PE credit, we have our PE class. We go out daily for a walk and have our monthly hikes. That gives us the opportunity for extra credit. For our math teacher, Mr. Wayne Nurse, who is also our music appreciation teacher, his class always starts with a math exercise where we practice what we learned in the class before. We work together until we finally think- until we finally think we understand. In his class, I learned to actually work by myself and understand algebra as well as geometry. We have Mr. Hunt, who is our history, psychology, and government teacher. He's funny, understandable teacher. At the class, we discuss in right or irresponsible what we learn, whether it's from a video or a teacher talk in history, psychology, or government class. Mr. Hunt has helped me understand the importance in history and how time by time, things change. We also have Ms. Dennis, who is our new science, biology, and ecology teacher. We learn- we learn by doing related worksheets. We have our science journals where we can always look back. As you can see, all our teachers do their job right. They have great experience with students, which help us improve not only to graduate, but also achieve our future goals. Our teachers explain everything with more detail, which lead us to a better understanding. The teachers here help us, the students, in their subject, which is why it works so well for us. Having the opportunity to be in Carpe, for me, was something that I would never regret. Not only for- not only I have met new people, but I also learned to get along and appreciate people around me. I learned many things, but the fact that the teachers aren't just there to make my life miserable. I became more familiar in school, and now I look forward to attending school every day. Today, there's no day I wouldn't say I wouldn't or I shouldn't go to school. I have my future goals to achieve after I graduate from Carpe Diem, and I would recommend this school for anyone who's behind their credits.
Patty, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very well done.
Hello, my name is Joseph Martinez. I am currently a senior at Sonoma Mountain. I started at Sonoma Mountain my junior year. If you asked me at Cannonworth High School how I felt about- how I felt about school, I would have told you I hated school. I had actually given up school before I entered eighth grade. I gave up because I felt lost in the system. I felt pushed from one teacher to another because it wasn't- because I wasn't receiving as much help as- as help from the teachers as I needed. They taught subjects that I didn't understand the previous year, so how was I going to understand them this year? I felt like they didn't want to be the one to hold me back, so they just kept passing me- me on, grade after grade, leaving me feeling more and more lost. When it came to my sophomore year, I stopped doing my work entirely because I didn't know how to do it. I didn't know where to- where to begin since I didn't understand it anyway. I was done with school and ready to drop out my junior year when I- when I would be eighteen. Then my- then my statistics teacher, Mr. Wilson, overheard my friend telling me not to drop out of high school. He pulled me aside and told me I shouldn't drop out, and there was another option. I felt it would be just another dead end and disappointment on my- my school journey. Mr. Wilson called my mom and told her about Sonoma Mountain. After a lot of talking with my mom, I knew I had to try one last thing before completely giving up. At the end, at the end of my summer, I received a letter saying I had been accepted at Sonoma Mountain. At Sonoma Mountain, the teachers really care about the students they teach, all of us. They want- they want them to succeed and pass and have a- have a bright future. If you get lost and you don't understand, they put you right back on track. If you don't understand the question, they will rephrase it for you, so you do understand. I have done a lot better here than I have done in my entire school history prior to attending Sonoma Mountain. I have mostly Bs and Cs. I used to get Fs and Ds. For the first time ever, I got an academic achievement award for my grades. The first one I received was gold. It showed me that I could still thrive in school and graduate. I know now that it just took teachers who cared and refused to give up on me, give up on kids like me. Because of this, I will be graduating in June 2013. This is something I did not think I would do. The curriculum at Sonoma Mountain High School is a bit different than a regular high school. Ms. Dee, our wonderful English teacher, makes English exciting with her positive attitude and is one of the few teachers who takes time to actually talk to you and show you that she cares. In English, we are focusing on expanding our vocabulary by looking at words from our readings. We recently finished reading "All Quiet on the Western Front", and we are going to start reading on Shakespeare. In PE, we take- we- we take daily walks to help earn credit. We also go on monthly hikes to earn extra credit. For PE class, we walk around the baseball field and then play basketball. Ms. Dennis, our science teacher, is one of the best teachers we've had for science in a long time. She makes science easy to understand by using visuals and projects to make information easier to comprehend. In science, we are now covering the food chain and food web. In addition to the biomes, we are also covering the science of evolution. Mr. Winters, our math teacher, makes math interesting when we do a warm-up because if we do the problem on the board correctly, we get a star burst. In math, we are always working on expanding our math skills by finding the interior and exterior angles of a shape. We also use a computer program called Alecs. We go on the computer and take an assessment, and then it knows what we need, the subjects that we need working on. Mr. Hunt, our history teacher, makes history understandable when he uses PowerPoints to explain definitions or key events. In history, we are focusing on imperialism and the effects it has. We also talk about the French Revolution and Marie Antoinette and the Guillotine. Currently, the teachers at Sonoma Mountain are planning to use iPads as teaching tools in our classroom. In the end, the teachers here at Sonoma Mountain is what defines the school and makes it what it is. They are what makes the kids want to succeed and helps them reach their goal to be able to succeed. I owe all my success to Mr. Wilson and the teachers at Sonoma Mountain and my family for seeing the best in me, even when I couldn't. I would like to thank you for- I would like to thank you for letting me be here and share my story. I would also like to thank Mr. Sims for choosing me to be part of this experience. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, any parting last comments? Do you have any staff you'd like to do?
I would just reiterate, the kids are pretty present. They see quality and they know what it is. And without the staff that I have, we would not have the successes that we have. We have terrific kids, and I have terrific teachers. I'm a lucky guy.
On behalf of the board, that's nice. Thank you very much for the work that you do. The small, necessary, schools are necessary.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We very much appreciate it. I do not see Jamie out here. She's next on my agenda.
So, oh, we saw Petaluma High and Casa Grande.
Yeah.
You stay there.
Where do you think you're at?
Let's go- let's go Casa Grande. Will Casa Grande up here to tell us what's going on?
Good afternoon, I'm Chris. I'm from Casa Grande, ASB. In Green Course Pathway English 12, students have finalized and submitted excellent senior project research papers. Students wrote about a wide range of green issues, including poverty as a green and global problem, promotion of eBooks in schools in conjunction with deforestation effects on native populations, and arguments for the promotion of and creation of outdoor learning environments in U.S. public schools. Today, we hosted Japanese exchange students. We gave them a tour of Casa, as well as a special tour of the Hatchery, which they learned about back in Japan. And the ASB class played games and ate pizza and ice cream with the students. Tonight is eighth-grade parent night at Casa, starting at seven. This Thursday will also be our annual Cluster Night. Our four clusters, Health Career Pathway, Green Course Pathway, Liberal Studies, and MQ, will be showcasing the programs and students' work. Physical Science from this remainder is proud to share that there were no Fs going to the final. Hopefully, they said that way afterwards. We have helped students to learn using hands-on experience in class with formulative assessments on the school website. We are in the- we are communication with parents using grades online and with the help of the council department. We are transitioning between Energy and Astronomy with a small unit on Nuclear Science and Physical Sciences. The layout for the Gadget is that has been updated and redesigned for this year. This class is published four issues so far this year, and the Press Democrat will have run about ten of our students' opinions, pieces, and articles by year's end. ASB is planning a winter formal for Saturday, January 26, as a fundraiser for the senior prom. Students have been submitting work for a student anthology that will be published and sold on Amazon and at Copperfield. And MQ hosted a holiday fair before winter break. Clubs and students showcased their crafts and sold products to the students, body, and staff. We have a lot of extremely talented students like Casa.
I'm Erin. I am also from ASB. I am the secretary. Students at Casa Grande's High School's United Anglers Program are giving their young, skill-head troupe a cliff job, an important step in preparing for their future relationship to the wild. The 11th winners in HCP US History just took the final, where they wrote an essay about the mass hysteria and race riots, comparing evidence they received about the 1920s, the crucible and acceptable risk, which they are reading and doing work for in both English and U.S. history. Coralyn Messer and Fabz Bryant continue to run weekly social thinking skills groups. These groups are comprised of ninth graders through 12th graders, students who, for various reasons, are having difficulty navigating the social worlds. We have several former group students who have graduated from Casa Grande High School who return to participate in and mentor in our groups. We want each student to feel valued for their uniqueness and recognize that they are not alone in their social struggles. By forming groups of students who share similar challenges, interests, and atypical social styles, it is our hope that such students feel less isolated and more understood. Our goal with each student is to empower him or her to acknowledge his or her individual communication style, demonstrate where and why he or she misses the mark socially, and teach him or her what is expected in a typical social interaction. On behalf of Solstice House, we would like to report that we have been working in partnership with Terry Bryant, owner of Moon Essence Spa downtown Petaluma. Terry performed soap-making demonstrations in science classrooms recently. She also provided moon essence soaps at a cost for our fundraising effort to help pay for Solstice House activities. Teaching students about the practical uses of herbal and medicinal plants is a major part of our collaborative project. Chemistry students in my- in A-class are doing art projects and writing about the chemistry of the art media, such as in clay, paint, dye, metal, and ink. They have spent about six weeks doing lab work and analysis to learn about the chemistry of art. Now, they are putting it all together by creating a work that includes at least two art media mediums and that represents them or their times. They will also create a museum-style placard that explains the chemistry.
Erin, Chris, thank you very much. Do we have anybody from Petaluma High School here?
So, everyone, thank you for having me. My name is Casey Page. I'm the ASB Vice President at PHS, and I'm also one of two board representatives. So, first of all, myself and the rest of Petaluma High would like to congratulate Teddy Scranton, who's a senior at our school. He recently won Student of the Month last year. It was recently announced that he was one of two winners in the Redwood Empire of the National Football Foundation Scholarship. The National Football Foundation is a branch of the NFL that recognizes students who are outstanding students and athletes. Teddy's respectable leadership qualities, grades, and football skills were rewarded with a $1,000 scholarship. We're very proud of him. Later this year, he will be attending an awards dinner, so we hope that goes well for him. Coming up on Tuesday, January 15, our students and staff will be welcoming potential freshman students and their parents to our eighth-grade parent night. This is going to be a showcase of our school's unique academic classes, pathways, and also athletic programs. And despite its name, we're going to be welcoming anyone from sixth grade through the 11th grade who is potentially going to enroll at Petaluma High School. Those who attend will receive a tour that highlights our elective programs, and then also, they will receive information on our core classes. We expect it to be very successful. And on top of that, a few of my fellow ASB members are going to be giving personal tours to a few eighth graders in our Shadow Day event.[1748.33] Those who attend are going to, first of all, get a personal tour, and they're also going to be participating in certain icebreaker activities to kind of make them feel welcome at Petaluma High and sort of encourage them to join our club. Our administration is currently working with the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, also known as WASC, in hope to receive their accreditation. And this essentially means that our school will be recognized for its ability to support high-quality student learning and ongoing school improvement. We will be participating in a self-evaluation process and hopefully demonstrate even more evidence of acceptable student achievement and school improvement. This is going to be going on throughout the rest of this school year, and then we will be receiving a visit from the WASC team next year. And that is just about it. Thank you for letting me speak.
What was that date for the tour?
The Shadow Tour, the...
No, the first one.
The first one, the eighth-grade parent night. It's January 15th, next Tuesday.
Mr. Stewart, you wouldn't mind if some of us showed up and took a little tour as well?
One hundred and fifty-nine.
Thank you. We've got a lot to show off there, so. Okay. Now, Jane.
It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Oscar Chavez, who is the Executive Director of Community Action Partnership. That is just one of the things that Oscar does, and I'm only going to tell you about the things that I know he does. He also is on the First Five Commission and is one of the commissioners for First Five and also sits on the Community Foundation of Sonoma County. Oscar is here tonight to talk about the Cradle to Career Initiative that is going on in Sonoma County. And with that, there he is.
Great. Thank you, Jane. And it's great to have Jane as a colleague on the commission. Well, I am indeed honored to be here today to talk to you about this amazing initiative that really is going to transform the lives of all children in Sonoma County, and that is Cradle to Career. In 2007, the County Board of Supervisors launched this committee called Health Action because we were having a healthcare crisis in Sonoma County with Sutter looking to move out. We had two specific tasks. One, to address the problems with the healthcare delivery system and how do we improve the health of the community. Well, we very quickly realized that it was very difficult to fix the healthcare delivery system because a lot of what impacts the system happens outside of our control, federal legislation. But what we could do is begin to think about how could we improve the health of Sonoma County so that over time, we will have less of an impact to the healthcare delivery system. One of the things that we learned is that healthcare does not equal health. That simply having more healthcare system does not improve the health of the community. That you've got to look at the social determinants of health, that where you live matters. The kind of housing that you have matters. The kind of income that you have matters. Whether you have access to food or to other resources matters. So we set this very ambitious goal for Sonoma County to be the healthiest county by 2020, and we have 10 distinct goals that we are working as part of a broad-sector group of leaders across the county to make sure that we meet that milestone. One of those goals is making sure that every child graduates high school on time and prepared to enter the economy or to pursue high school or to pursue a career after high school, whether it's technical education, JC, or the university. And when we look at what's happening in Sonoma County, we know that we can do better. We know that we can do better. We know that we must do better. That if we want to attract good companies to Sonoma County, that if we want to improve the quality of life for ourselves and our children, we have to do better for our children. So about 18 months ago, a group of cross-sector leaders came together to look at what could such a system look like in Sonoma County, where we could make sure that every child along the educational continuum was receiving and acquiring all of the necessary supports to meet important milestones, to ensure that by the time they were graduating high school, they were prepared, they had a plan, they had the skills necessary to be competitive for tomorrow's economy. What we settled upon are five distinct goals. We want to make sure that every child enter kindergarten ready to succeed. It is imperative and important that we close the readiness gap. We know. We know. And the study supports us that if we invest early in the life of the child, we get the greatest financial return on investment. Now, what does that mean? Making sure that every child has access to quality preschool education, making sure that every parent sees themselves as their child's first teacher and advocate, that that child has a medical home, that they've had the necessary screenings so that when they enter kindergarten, when they come to your school, they are ready to start learning. I am convinced that with the resources that we have here in Sonoma County, we can guarantee that every child be kindergarten-ready by the time that they're ready to enter your schools. And what does that mean? Well, it means that we have to think about new ways to expand early childhood education. As a commissioner of our First Five, we are making some significant investments, particularly in our communities of highest need because we know that if we invest there, we are going to have greater impact and we're going to see improvements in reading rates. We're also going to see a reduction in the number of children requiring special education or other interventions from the social service system. We want to make sure that every child is succeeding academically. We want to make sure that every child is reading at grade level by third grade. That doesn't happen unless parents see themselves in that important role and that there's necessary supports to help families along that continuum. We want every child supported in and out of school. We really understand what is getting in the way of young people having success. And if there are students that are struggling, how do we link them with other providers providing services in the community? We're not just talking about dumping a bunch of services. We are talking about being very intentional in how we link services across the educational pipeline so that we eliminate redundancy, but they improve coordination. And more importantly, all of us as providers have a plan about what we're going to measure over time. We want to make sure that every young adult is prepared to achieve their life and career goals. We want to make sure that there is meaningful career technical education that actually is going to prepare young people for the jobs that perhaps haven't even been realized, which means that we have to be flexible as school districts, which means that we have to be innovative. We have to be risk-takers, all for the sake of making sure that our young people can be competitive for the jobs of tomorrow. We have to make sure that every young adult thrives and becomes a contributing member of our community. It is a shame that we can't retain the talent here in our community because of cost, because of other factors. We can do better. If we want to attract strong companies, if we want to attract people to come and live in our communities, we have to have world-class schools to be able to have a world-class workforce. Across Sonoma County, people are embracing the concept of Cradle to Career. We are asking school districts to sign a resolution of alignment, a pledge that you will support Cradle to Career and its goals, its strategies. And we're utilizing something called collective impact. It's really this model for how we're going to achieve our work over the long-term period. It begins with the understanding that we're all going to come together and have a common understanding of the problem or the issue. We're going to focus on shared metric, making sure that we're measuring with counts, that we have mutually reinforcing activities and not duplicate, that we have continuous communication over a long-term period, and that there be a backbone organization that supports this work over the long term. And for Sonoma County, that backbone has been the county. The county has stepped up. They are investing millions of dollars over the next 10 years to make sure that we can win, that we can collectively close the achievement gap that has plagued our community for so long. Just this morning, the County Board of Supervisors committed $375,000 of county money to support programs under the auspices of Cradle to Career. The private sector is getting involved. John Jordan Winery committed $250,000 to focus on career technical education. And we need to make sure that we are out there talking to the business community in Petaluma to make sure that they support the efforts that you are trying to do. I know that you have a Family Resource Center. You run similar programs that we do in Santa Rosa with Pacitos, with Avance. These are important programs because it's not just about delivering a service to parents. It's about giving parents the tools to see themselves as their child's first teacher. That is so important. We need to do more. We're advancing this idea of a full-service community school where we are bringing resources and services to help students, understanding that the success of children can no longer be borne by you. It really requires the direct involvement and participation of a whole community. So that's the movement. That's the ask here. We need strong leadership. We need you to say that the outcomes that we're getting, while we think they're good, they're not good enough. We can do better, but we can't do better unless we all work together and do what's in the best interest of all our children here in Sonoma County. I don't know if you have the pledge. We want to bring it to you. We hope that you can sign on board. We're getting great support. Santa Rosa has signed on board. The board is enthusiastic. We are developing a community school concept project in Roseland, in the Cook Middle School campus, where we are going to make that a full-service community school, providing preschool education for 250 children, providing a comprehensive Family Resource Center that provides comprehensive education to parents, where people and parents can work on entrepreneurial development, parenting skills, to really build the residency of children, of families, and ultimately of neighborhoods so that we can start, stop depending on services, but really begin to build community. And that's the hope, and that's why I'm so excited to champion this effort along with many others. And as a school member for the Windsor Unified School District, I talk a lot about this with my peers and my superintendent, and they are very excited about the potential that one day we can close the achievement gap, our children will be successful, and we will be the best county in California by 2020. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I actually wanted to say, some of the stuff that you were talking about, we've kind of got programs started that, I don't know, I'm assuming that you've been in discussion with how to integrate?
Yes, we have been in discussion in how to integrate some of these programs. Cradle to Career and the other county initiatives that are going on have already recognized Avance and Pacitos as kind of model programs, and we already have those right here in our district. As Oscar said, we have the Family Resource Center that is located at McDowell Elementary School and also serves parents, not just from McDowell, but from really across the district. And those kinds of seeds are the seeds that we want to keep growing so that we can build that very strong network of support around our families and we can begin to address in a much more purposeful manner the achievement gap so that we can close that achievement gap and make our schools in Petaluma, which are already outstanding schools, even better.
You are really ahead of the game in terms of what we want to further in advance in our community. And we're getting enormous interest from other districts to say, what do we need to do to build a comprehensive Family Resource Center at our school? But you've got the components there, and I think that if you look at that a little further and really look at this idea of cross-sector collaboration, what is the role of business to help students succeed? What is the role of families, of nonprofits, and how are we all working together? I mean, that's really the key. It's no longer up to schools to make sure that students succeed. It is our community is a responsibility.
We have really, this year, Whit Paul is in the audience, and this year Whit has really stepped up with the Rotary Club, and the Rotary Club has gotten very involved at McKinley School and is doing some outstanding support projects directly with students. We've got Carol in the audience, and we all know the wonderful work that Petaluma Adult School. First of all, we are like the only district in the county that actually has an adult school left. And the wonderful school that, the wonderful support that Carol provides, not only to adults, but also to families within our school district. So we have the seeds. We are ahead of the curve, as Oscar said, and we just want to keep that momentum going.
Anybody else?
It is our intent to bring the resolution to the board at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right. We're going to reengage here on Item H, which is going to be approval of the minutes for November 13th and December 11th. We've got to do this in two stages because we have some different folks over here for those. So for November, I will be abstaining because I was not here, but all four of you were reporting to the minutes, so. All those in favor? So November 13th minutes are approved. And then for December 11th, it would be Mr. Badley, myself, and Mary?
I was not here.
All those in favor? All right. So November 13th and December 11th meetings are approved. I do not have any comments from the public. Is there anybody in the public wishing to make public comment? See nobody rise? We're going to move past Item I and go right to J, which is Report on Activities and Correspondence of School Board Members. We have some music programs that were attended, the CSBA presentation. Okay, and maybe we can circle back to that. And then we had some sporting events, and Mr. Badley announcing basketball games, which we appreciate. So maybe you can give us real quick on the CSBA?
Oh, we just, I got to attend the conference for one day. They comped me for being a presenter. We spoke about student wellness, and it was very interesting. I met Kelly Noe, who's with... Yeah, and so that was in the circle back, coming back to this board meeting about it. But yeah, it was fun. It was nice.
All right. So let's go to Item K, Agenda. Approval of the Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion. Second. All those in favor? That is the bulk of this meeting. We do need to hit... I'm going to work my way through it, but... What else do you have, Steve, besides what I have in front of me? Just something else. We have to hit the information.
William, that's it.
Jane, will you be presenting? All right. So for the Williams Settlement Act, it's a quarterly report. And we had no Williams and that issue to report?
Correct.
There you go. Okay. Did anybody want to discuss or talk about anything on the ADA that we need to know about? None of the reports in there. We have, we're up a little bit from last year. And Educational Services, that's all consent discussion. Anybody want to talk about or have any questions regarding... So then I'm going to move to the not as much fun part of this board meeting, which is the Public Record of Action taking a closed session. And we will move to case number 15. So these, for those watching at home, prior to this meeting, we need a closed session to talk about student disciplinary matters. So there's been a presentation of a set of facts, and this will be sort of the public version of that presentation, set of facts, keeping appropriate privacy protections in place. Case number 15. Case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted and were not successful, and/or due to the nature of the act, the presence of the pupil causes a continuing danger to the safety of the pupil and others. Recommended motions for the board to support the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated community school. Student's expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2012-2013 school year and the fall semester of the 2013-2014 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling, screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. All those in favor? That passes on a vote of 5-0. Case 16. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The site, excuse me, the recommended motion for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. Student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2012-2013 school year and the fall semester of the 2013-2014 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and monthly screening, community service, and appropriate academic performance. All those in favor? That passes on a vote of 5-0. And finally, case 17. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district comprehensive school under mandated conditions. Student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2012-2013 school year and the fall semester of the 2013-2014 school year. Conditions above are subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management, or life skill counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. All those in favor? And that passes on a vote of 5-0 as well. Future business calendar of activities. Our next meeting is going to be at 6:00 PM right here, 200 Douglas Street, on January 22nd. here, 200 Douglas Street, on January 22nd, and we've got some upcoming events, we've got a holiday and some other board meetings scheduled, and other than that, I would entertain a motion to appear.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're there.